Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. And I'll ask if there's any, well, I'm gonna ask David Monk.
Okay.
David?
I will. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us. And for all the many friends and associates that we have, the pleasure and the privilege to work with on behalf of this college. And we just ask that you would imbue us with a special wisdom tonight to make decisions that would be, would be good for each of those that, that we serve out of our community. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, David. Do we have any public comments? If not, Dr. Jerry, you want to call the role?
I will. Let me get it out here. Ray Raymond?
Here.
Jerry Stone?
Here.
Michael Henry?
I'm here.
Ron Day?
Here.
Paula Kimball?
Here.
David Monk?
I am here.
Dr. Rissinger? And Steve Grant. Steve, are you here yet? Steve, are you here?
I'm here.
Great. Good to have you here. We got everybody here, right?
Okay. Thank everybody for being here today. All right. We'll move into the, and ask for the president's report.
Well, I've got quite a few. We've had quite a few things going on the last few weeks towards the end of the semester. The semester ends next week. I'd like to just say, I'm very proud of all of our TBCC students. Especially our athletes and our, our performing groups and our other organizations. They've really done a lot in the last couple of weeks. They've overcome a lot, actually, and I'm really proud of them and what they've been able to do. Given the COVID problems that we've had over the last year and, and the changes in schedules that we've had to make. And, and then we had the major winter storm back a few months ago and all the other obstacles that they've had to overcome. I'm very proud of them. Let me just start off with the cheerleaders. The cheerleaders won the 2021 national championship a couple of weeks. It was the 12th time in the history of our college for them to do that. And we want to congratulate the TBCC cheer team and their coach, Vontae Johnson, and assistant coach, Chris Franklin. Also want to congratulate the TBCC Cardinal Showgirls. They won the 2021 national championship also in Dance Team Union National Championship and the Open Palm and Open Team Performance. They also got some recognition for some other things that they were doing. And they put in a, a hard year's work and did a lot of work to get ready for that. And it's been, yeah, not a normal circumstance for them, but they've, they've made it through and they did a great job. Also want to congratulate the Cardinal Director, Darla Mansfield. She always does a good job. Those are always great students as they are this time. The Cardinal Women's Basketball Team. We were there last week in, in Lubbock and we won the regional tournament. We won the conference tournament. We went into the national tournament as the number two seed in the nation. And we did a great job. They won several, they won three games. They won last Tuesday, last Thursday, last Friday, and then the championship game was on Saturday. At three o'clock, they had a great game, but I think they ran out of gas in the fourth quarter of that game. And they ended up losing at seventy, sixty-seven to sixty to Northwest Florida, who'd only lost two games all year. Very proud of the Lady Cardinals and their head coach, Precious Ivy, and assistant coach Princess for the great seasons they've had. And again, those, those are athletes are, are great students and they're great athletes both on and off the court. Very proud of them. Also very proud, they were also ranked number two in the nation. Going into the, the men's basketball team had a great year again this year. They were ranked number seven in the nation at the end of the season. They won the, the, the conference championship, went down and played in the national championship in Hutchinson, Kansas. Last week, they won their first game there and they ended up losing the second game to a team that ended up playing in the finals. They lost the finals, but they played in the finals. A very good team. Their final record for the year was twenty-three and three, so they had a great year. It was a condensed season because of COVID. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, so it was a very difficult for them because oftentimes they didn't know if they were going to play a game or not. Their schedules changed from week to week depending upon COVID and things like that. So I'm very proud of them as well. Their coach, Mark Leslie, Guy Ferrer, and Marcus Socks all did a great job as they've been doing the last few years. Also, I want to mention the football team. They, they are currently four and one. They're ranked number, I think they're ranked number eight in the nation right now. They lost one game to Cisco and they play, they play again next Monday, next Saturday at one o'clock at Bruce Field. They played Lynn. Congratulations to Coach Potteet and his staff. We've also got student organizations that have been participating and competing in different activities. Student Government Association went down to Austin a couple of weeks ago. And under the leadership of Courtney Skiles and James Jones, they ended up with a lot of accolades and they won a lot of different things. They ended up basically being the second best student government association in the state of Texas. So we're also very proud of them and the things they've had to overcome to get there. The TBCC Agriculture Club, every year they go to the state convention, a State Agriculture Association Convention. Last year they didn't get to go because of COVID. This year they were able to go is at West Texas A&amp;M University in Canyon. And they did a very good job, again, under the leadership of Mark Robinson. They finished first and second and third in many of the leadership events. Very proud of them as well. The rodeo team has been doing very good. They've been participating in rodeos even in the fall semester as well as the spring semester. Our, our rodeo was canceled back in February because of the, of the ice storm. And so I wanted to mention to you that we'll be having our rodeo, TBCC rodeo on May the seventh and eighth. That's Friday, May the seventh and eighth. And we obviously want, want as many people to come to that as possible. Brett Bratton's been doing a good job with the rodeo. Our expectation is we may have one, maybe two of our rodeo team members that end up going to the nationals. We'll find that out in a couple of weeks for sure. Also wanted to mention something about the Kilman property. We've been working to sell the Kilman property over the last few months. I mentioned it at the last board meeting. We have a Kilman meeting, a board meeting that we've been having. We have three members of that on the board. And we have made the decision that we're going to, to continue looking at that thirty-five undivided acres that we, we have in that a hundred and ninety acre plot that we're getting ready to sell. And we're going to see what we can do to possibly resolve that and determine what issues there may be for future buyers. We've talked to a few, I think Steve's talked to a few people about that. And they believe it would be better for us to resolve that issue if possible or come to some resolution with that before we put it out for sale. And so Steve, do you have anything else you want to mention on that? He's kind of been leading that.
Well, I, I will tell you that we're making some pretty good headway. And I think by the time we have another meeting, some issues should be resolved or could be. At least we'll know what direction to take.
Okay, sounds good. And I, again, we'll just kind of keep that on standby until we get some direction. And we figure out what the best options are for us to go forward with that. The, the budget, I just wanted to mention that. We've been working hard on the budget since mid-February. David Hopkins, his group has been working on as well as everyone else. We, we hope to have budget meetings, a board budget meetings in mid, mid-June. And then two probably in July and then one in early August. I was talking to Ray earlier today. We, we talked about the budget committee, the board budget committee. And who may be interested in serving on that. Normally we have three individuals. I guess we could probably have four without having a, a quorum. So I think, Ray, were you gonna talk about that now or you want to talk about it some other time?
We can talk about it now. If there's anyone that would like to serve on a committee, on a budget committee, just speak up at this time.
I will serve on that committee.
Okay. Anyone else? David, you're on standby. You, would you serve on it again?
I will.
Okay, David?
Yes, sir. I will.
Okay.
Steve, how about you?
Okay. I'll be glad to.
Okay, we could, we could have another one. Anyone? Want to? You on the committee?
Right. We'll let you kind of be an ex officio if you want to do that, if there's three and you.
Okay, okay.
We'll keep, we'll keep everybody else up to date and give them updates on where we are with it as we go along. But again, we'll have one meeting as we get closer to it. Obviously, I'll let everybody know. But we're looking at, if you want to mark your calendars, we're looking at sometime around the mid-June, the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, something like that. And we'll, we'll find the best time for everybody. And it could be Zoom or it could be face to face. We'll, we'll, we'll figure out what that would be best. And then we're looking for another one, meeting probably early July. That would be probably the fifth, sixth or seventh. And then another one in two weeks later, that would be on the, maybe the twentieth, twenty-first to twenty-second. And then a final meeting would be in August, early August before we make, before we have our mid-August meeting. And that would probably be early in August on the third or fourth. So again, as we get closer and we can kind of get with everybody, find out what the best dates are, what the best times are. And we'll, we'll determine with that. But thank you for volunteering to serve.
Very much. While we're talking about that, I'm gonna talk about the board meetings.
Okay.
I think we have some that's getting interested in getting back together face to face for meetings. In May, we may not have to have a board meeting, but if we do, it's, there won't be but just one or two items on it. So I was thinking we'd go ahead and if we have to get together, let's go ahead and do it in Zoom. And then let's have, if it's all right with everybody, we'll go back and have our first face to face, I guess, in June. But we're going to have to have that budget meeting in June. So, but our first board meeting would be in June, face to face. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Sounds good.
Okay, okay. All right.
That'll be June twenty-eighth. And while we're talking, yeah, while we're talking about that, let me mention, we normally don't have a May meeting. And there's a very good chance that we, we may not need to have one this year either. We're still working on the parking lot for the, for the Health Science Center. We're still trying to get bids in and we're trying to, there's, there was some issue with the city, trying to work with them on, on some things. I think Randall's been work, Randall Scott's been working with that. And so it's possible that we could get those bids in, in, in mid-May. And if we do, I'd like to go ahead and get approval to move forward or at least have some discussion on that. So that's, that would be the reason why we would have a, a May meeting, if we can get those bids in. And if we can get together and have a, a, one agenda type of meeting, Zoom meeting, just to talk about the parking lot. Because I'd like to go ahead and get started on that this summer. I'd like to get started on it as quickly as we possibly can. So that would be the only reason we'd have a May meeting, if we have one.
Okay.
I, I want to also mention, Ray, the graduation ceremony, I think you probably already know about that, but it's scheduled for May fourteenth. Our graduation this year will be like it was back in December. It's called a rolling graduation. We're still meeting all the safety requirements and CDC requirements. We'll have the families coming in and the graduates coming in one at a time. It's going to be from one o'clock to three o'clock on Friday afternoon on May the fourteenth. For the regular TBCC graduates, the Health Science, ADN graduates and Health Science graduates will have their graduation at three o'clock on that same day. So from one to three will be the other graduation part. And then from three to probably four or four-thirty will be the Health Science graduates. So I think that's all been worked out. You're welcome to come to that if you'd like to. And just let us know. We'll put you on the program. We'll do whatever we need to do with that. Also, I wanted to mention, I think many of you saw the information about the endowed scholarship that Kenneth and Reba McGee provided to college. It was in memory of his brother, who, I didn't even realize this until a couple of months ago, that his brother Mike McGee died in a tragic bull riding accident in April of nineteen sixty-seven while he was competing at the Navara College Rodeo over in Corsicana. His brother Mike was a sophomore bull rider for Henderson County Junior College when he, when he died at, at that event. And so Kenneth and Reba gave a scholarship for that and we're very proud of that. And I just wanted to mention that to you so that you'd also be aware of that. And, and I think, Ray, that's all I have. The next board meeting will probably be June the twenty-eighth. And, and we'll just kind of play it by ear on May and see what happens with the parking lot information that we get.
Okay. Any questions on any of what presidents talk about? All right. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number four, consider minutes of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one record board meeting. Do I, you, those minutes have been made available to you? Do I hear a motion to be approved as presented?
Maybe they approved as printed.
All right. Dr. Charlie makes a motion. I hear a second.
Second. David?
David, second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will oppose like? Motion carries. Item number five, we consider the business financial investment report for February of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, we're going to go back to the very capable David Hopkins to do this report for us. It's all yours, David.
All right. Norma's gonna bring up our talking points here.
David, I'm looking, hold on a minute. I don't think you sent me the one where it's all together. So I'll have to do these one at a time. So just tell me which one to bring up.
All right. The, the revenue and expenses first.
Okay, I've got that one. So hold on, let me get it.
All right. Yeah, put that together. I said I didn't send it to you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. There you go.
All right. Everything on the revenues on the, on the first page there is again trending about like last month. We're still obviously down twelve percent on tuition. And as well as housing, food service and bookstore, those amounts are close to what they were last month. They're hovering around the same amounts. Of course, property taxes, we're doing very well there. Down at the bottom of the page on expenses, the travel. Again, that's down about three hundred and forty-eight thousand. I would expect that to change a little bit because of sports teams. As the president mentioned, that everybody's been traveling. So I think we're going to have obviously some travel expenses there. Again, you still see supplies, bookstore purchases for resale are still down. Next page, Norma. On that one. There we go. The again, all the expenses are again trending down. Some of this is timing. We had some major repairs at this time, but this time last year that we didn't have this year. But overall, I wanted to point out down at the very bottom, you see that revenues over expenses currently is thirteen million nine eighty-two. At this same time last year, it was thirteen four seventy-four. It's not unusual this time of year when you've got all your property taxes in, pretty much most of your tuition. This, you know, would be probably one of the high points. Of course, we've got all the way until August thirty-first covering expenses there. But does anybody have any questions about that before we go to the next slide?
My report is services.
Well, that's like where we, we've hired someone to perform a service for us to fix something or something like that as opposed to buying supplies. Lawyers, accountants, plumbers, all those kind of people. Okay, Norma, the next one is the investment and cash summary month to month. Yeah, all the, we have very healthy cash position. Obviously, there is, there's one number down at the bottom of the page on the right-hand side that is going to be pertinent to our next agenda item. You'll notice that, and this number is higher now, it's about one point one two nine million. That's the debt service reserve. And again, I just, I wanted to point that out because we're going to be talking about bond payoff here in just a few minutes. So keep that number in mind. The next file is the monthly investment report.
Oh, right there. Okay.
Okay, the, again, the, our investment report, yeah, just a little bit further breakdown on what we've got, cap reserve there, fifteen million eight forty-one, five eighty-two. Next screen is the capital reserve activity.
Is it a missed hour or just? Oh, okay. Hold on.
Yeah. And really not much here, a few parking lot expenses. Again, I just, I'll mention this again when we get to the bond deal. We are, my controller and I are not going to be recommending taking any money out of here if the board chooses to pay off the bonds. I think that's, that's a significant item I wanted to mention. And the last screen on the financials I've got is the over twenty-five thousand. And again, everybody, I apologize. I put this slideshow together and didn't bother to send it to the presenter. That's what happens when you have a weekend. Two things I wanted to point out on here are the, the two vital source. Those are the inclusive access, basically the digital textbook, textbooks, if you will, both the, the Verba software in the Cengage and Limited at the bottom. The other bills that you see on there are regular monthly type of bills. Anybody have any questions about any of those? All right. Norma, I don't think you've got these others. So what I'm gonna do is just talk about them. And what I wanted to do, board. This, this HERF thing is going to be with us for a while. So what I wanted to do is kind of give you an update on kind of where we are, both mainly the, the institutional side. To date, we've got, we've spent six hundred and two thousand dollars on the institutional side, the HERF one money. On, you know, those, those are purchases, room and board refunds. As, as we talked about, we've got another three point eight million in HERF two. And with the remaining HERF one funds, that's, as we sit here today, we've got about four million, two hundred and six thousand dollars available to us. And I don't remember if we talked about this last time, but we have gotten some fairly significant guidance from the DOE since we last talked. They have pushed the date that we can get lost revenue and expenses back to the date of the emergency, which is March twenty-twenty. And that was very significant for us because of what we lost in the summer. I'm going to be pulling down probably this week in excess of a million dollars. Both for lost revenue from last summer and TDCJ expenses for salaries, which they also indicated were eligible. And I'll be giving you better estimates and hopefully a better slideshow later on. But we're going to be pulling this down by semester. Obviously, the first time, we're going to go from March to August twenty-twenty. And then we'll start with the fall semester when we solidify those numbers. And spring, as we move forward, you know, spring is not over obviously, but we'll move in semester by semester. And we expect that what they're calling HERF three euphemistically. Another, you know, possibly as much as six million dollars available to us. And we thought it was important to, to give the board an update on this every month. And again, I'll, I'll send those slides out. I apologize again for that, not having those to Norma. But I, I want y'all to know that, because that's going to be a big part of, as we move forward, making our budget whole, at least for this year and the next year. And on the student side of the HERF two money. We have given five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars to students out of the nine thirty-two, six twenty, which is the same amount that we were allocated or required to spend on students out of HERF one. And so we've still got about four hundred and seven thousand dollars to allocate to students out of that. Now, I know that was a lot pretty quick with no visuals. Can I answer any questions?
David, I have, I have one. In terms of lost revenue. Does that include like from the bookstore or housing?
All of it.
So we, are you saying that that'll be making us hold on those items eventually?
Right. The, the first pass we're going to do is we're going to do summer, which will be housing, bookstore, tuition and fees. I think that was pretty much it for the summer. Plus, the, as y'all recall, TDCJ was closed. We got verification that we could pull down those salaries because the teachers couldn't teach. And that was a question we had from the very beginning, but they've given us an affirmative on that as well. And, and, you know, obviously this money is going to go as far as it goes, but, and, and that's why I want to start reporting it every month. As we move through these semesters, we're still going to have some expenses, not as many, obviously, and that should be dwindling as we move through and COVID gets better, things start opening up again. We, we shouldn't have quite as much. But we don't know until we get to those other semesters exactly what that brings.
Thank you.
David, question. I've seen recognizing these, we'll call them reimbursements, they, they are. But as, as revenue, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a good question, David. You know, this, for those of us who've been doing grants for a while, this is sort of a uncharted. Yeah, that's a good question, David, you know, this, for those of us who've been doing grants for a while, this is sort of a uncharted territory where you have a grant reimbursement, normally you buy something and they give you grant money. The, the best we can tell in the grant fund, you know, you account for this separately, the grant fund, the expenditure is basically going to be the reimbursement to the general fund. You know, since that's where the lost revenue lies. And I'm, I'm going to talk to Gallup Morgan about it, but what, what we see happening is when we bring that money into the general fund, it'll be an other source of revenue. As you see in the budget, I'm not going to change. Obviously, tuition and fees, I will leave those revenues as they are so we can track where we stand, I'll bring this in as a separate item so we can kind of see it, see the whole picture.
Good, good, good plan, well, now, you're, you're, the HERF one, you're getting reimbursed, what for us would, would be the, the summer, and since our year ends eight thirty-one, how, how are you, how, how much was that, how, how are you treating that for a period that's already closed?
Another good question, they, they, the DOE gave us guidance on that as well, using examples of different fiscal years. What, what they're saying is that that summer outside of our fiscal year, plus this year, will all be recognized in the audit for this year. And, and they're, you know, obviously, they're accepting the fact that those fiscal years are closed, we can't go back, they're audited numbers. And so they have acknowledged in their guidance to us that yes, we know that's a different fiscal year, but you're going to recognize it this year. At least anything through this August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, it'll be anything lost revenue this year, plus the prior summer.
So for us, since we've already closed that period, well, others too, but, but in our case specifically, anything that we receive from HERF one will, will actually be a, a bonus, if you will, it might be one way to, to look at it, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. That was another reason that Stephanie and I were not really too concerned about using current operating cash, pay off the bonds, I mean, there's.
Well, I appreciate and endorse, you know, your, your direction as far as being able to isolate that, because, you know, I, I think a board is charged with knowing where you've been, where you're going, and what you're doing it with, since it's other people's money. And to do that, you know, you can't have this, this, this oddity that came about because of, of all the, you know, the, the government contribution here, and still know what you've done at a core level, so doing, it sounds like, you know, people will say, here's what we really produced on the ground as TDTC, here's what came floating down from on high or from wherever Washington might be, and, and you're mine. So that, that's, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't typically recommend amending revenue budgets, because I like to know, you know, this will stick out like a sore thumb, obviously, every time we draw down a million, two million dollars. And if I don't amend the budget, it'll stick out very plainly, and that, that, of course, that's the intent. And whether it's tuition and fees or property taxes, I want to know how good my estimates were. So I won't be touching those, obviously.
And you do plan a monthly update, I, I think it's helpful to us, you know, we, we, I think we're all interested in in kind of knowing how, how that's tracking and how it's going is, is great.
Yeah, because they've got so many different pots of money now, where Trey and I are going to be, you know, anything that we draw down, I'll move it from projected over to drawing down, so y'all can clearly see what's been done and what we're projecting for the future. You know, at some point, we'll have final numbers for the spring, and we'll put those out there, and eventually sometime in the summer, draw that down. Fall will be next, but we're just trying to let the dust settle just a little bit.
That, that's great, thank you.
Okay, sure. I believe that's all I have, unless anybody has any other questions.
Thank you, David, for that, for that good report. Anyone, anyone have any questions, David? If not, I hear motion to approve business, financial, and investment report for February of twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
So moved.
David makes a motion, Jerry, did you say?
Yes, I second.
Okay.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Hold a poll, like sign. Motion carries. Item number six, consider and discuss pre, uh, prepayment of American National Bank bond.
I think David's going to also be involved in discussion on this, but we've talked about it quite a bit. And we have a recommendation, and I think you can see on the screen there, some of the information, but David, you want to talk about how we talked about handling this?
Sure, the, y'all can see there that all of the payments for this year have been made, including the May first interest payment. We've got two point four million dollars outstanding. As I mentioned before, part, and I haven't gone back and looked at the bond covenants, because we're here talking about paying it all. We, every month, we've set money aside essentially for next year's payment, and I'm, that was probably part of the bond covenants, I'm assuming. But even as we sit here today in April, we've got one point one two nine million set aside in that bond reserve that I just mentioned in the financial report. Stephanie and I believe that that combined with some of the other stuff I just mentioned, the cash is going to be available from the summer, et cetera, et cetera. We're recommending that if the board does want to pay off the bond, we, we think it's very doable. We think we've got, you know, almost half the money set aside now in cash. So, you know, we're proposing using operating cash and not touching capital reserve to do this. And I think, David, you had asked last time, you know, the, the, we're paying one point seven nine, y'all see there, you know, CD rates that I got just the other day, they're trying to allocate some money, they're ranging from point two five to point five oh, depending on the term. So to me, the smart thing, no more than we have, we have the cash available, pay it off, that's probably the best use of the cash, looks like to me.
David, I would say, and, 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 you know, to, to you and the others, that, and I know from a conversation last month, that and, and I believe you validated that, that the indications of rate trends just don't suggest that they're going to be moving much, you know, we occasionally hear a flutter, and, you know, futures may move a little bit one way or the other, but over the, the, you know, the very short time horizon until the, the final maturity on this, I just can't see that with the, the cash that we're sitting on and, and earning, you know, a quarter or certainly less, less than a half, that it would make sense to continue that, but would also say, I think we extend our appreciation to American National Bank for having offered what I truly believe at that time was a really good deal, and, and furthermore, made it as easy and inexpensive as they possibly could, and in other words, you know, they, they didn't, you know, they didn't treat it just as, as something that, that came through the door, and you know, a source of, of profit, but rather, I, I think tried to facilitate keeping the costs low and a, and a really good rate. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd offer a motion to retire the, the bond.
All right, David makes a motion to retire the bond with American National Bank, I hear a second.
Second.
Steve seconds motion, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
I need to abstain, please.
Charlie abstains, all in favor, favor, say aye. All polls like sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, discuss Northwest dorm renovation.
One of the things that we talked about last summer in our budget proposals and budget process was the fact that we needed to spend some facilities money for upgrading and improving Northwest Hall. And one of the areas there that needs major improvement is the stairs replacement, and it's out, basically the outside of the, of the area there. And we went out and got bids for that so that we could do it this summer while the dorms were empty. And we got three bids, and you can see on the information, the low bid is Paragon Construction and Associates from Tyler, hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Macau and Engineering is also, we've been working with them to be able to help us with the basic construction, supervise that, make sure that it complies with the approved design. And all of this work was included in the budget initially for us to do this year, we were, had to wait to do it for the summer because of the dorms are being occupied. So we would ba, basically ask for approval and/or authorization to contract with Paragon Construction, which is a low bid to to do this renovation. Does anybody have any questions?
Derek King used to have one, is that, is that a supported by performance bond?
I don't, I do not know, but I can certainly find out, David, do you know, David Graham, do you know if that, was it, was there a performance bond included in that? He may not even be on the.
He's there.
Earlier, but.
Yeah, we've not included a performance bond in this, but we, we should add one in there.
So is that a, a yes?
That is a no, at the current, at the one twenty-four, eight fifty, there is no performance bond in there. But neither is any of the other numbers, but I, I agree with you, David, we probably ought to put one in there and add that to it.
Yeah. It, materials and cost and everything, you know, just so fluid today. And, and, and as far as I know, this is not a, a contractor that we know anything much about, or from a direct experience perspective.
We've never hired them, but these are the people, the president of Paragon was the former president of our contractor that built the Terrell Health Science Center, Don Cole.
So I guess, then again, basically, we will be adding the performance bond, I'm glad you brought that up, David, because I really hadn't even thought about that, but that's very, very something we need to do.
There, there's just, you know, so many things flying by, it, it's easier for, easy for a detail to, to slide, but I, I know it'd give you guys a lot more peace of mind if you're on the ground and see something going wrong, then you know you have a, a place to turn and, you know, and everybody else wondering why.
Very good, and I appreciate the fact that you brought that up, and so we would ask for you to approve Paragon, and then we would add a performance bond to that.
Anyone have any other comments about it?
I do have some statements and probably a question back to David Graham. I would suggest that probably most of our board has not been in this dorm. This dorm is in bad, bad shape. And I have an issue with just trying to patch it with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar patch job. The dorm is in bad shape, it needs a lot of work, the, the rooms are shot, mold, mildew, it's not in good shape. I know this because I'm in this dorm, I've been in this dorm frequently, and I've been in it recently. I would suggest that there's not a board member here that would allow their children or their grandchildren to stay in that dorm. I would hate to see us just begin a patch job over the next two or three years. Instead of going ahead and taking care of this dorm as it needs to be taken care of, I do not think this is the Trinity Valley way to patch. I think this is an eyesore on this campus, and I think we need to go ahead and invest the money and go ahead and get this dorm up to Trinity Valley standards, standards that this board would be proud of. When we have parents that pull up with their kids and they don't even let their kids stay in that dorm because it's in such bad condition, that's a problem, and that relates back to us. So my question back to David is, do you have an estimate, you've been in that dorm, you have an idea about what it would take to get this dorm back in great condition, do you, do you have a number on that, David?
I can give you a number that I think, but the way prices are going up from what I hear in the paper, I, I don't know how accurate it would be or worthwhile, I, I can say this, this was the first phase of, of a multi-phased approach that we were going to try to take this dorm, we've studied it and the air conditioning systems and have got to be replaced, the, the interior, all that, I mean, I don't, your assessment of the dorm, it being in poor shape is an accurate assessment. And this is the last of the dorms that we plan to work on. We evaluated, looked at the possibility of, of tearing it down completely, but, but there's issues with that because of some vermiculite that we found in the dorm that's not hazardous, except it, it's costly to get rid of when you start tearing it down.
So I mean, let me kind of also answer the question, or, or discuss it, we, we have, we know that this dorm is not in good shape. It was just like Northeast Dorm was three years ago, it took us two years to get, to, to put the money in the budget to be able to upgrade Northeast to where it's in really good shape right now. And so our plan was to spend money this year, which we put in this year's budget, we did it last summer, and this, in this year's budget, I mean, and I'm sorry, in next year's budget, in twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which we'll be talking about in the next few months, we have plans to put money in to be able to upgrade the dorm in a second phase. And, but again, that's, that will not happen until the students are out of the dorm, which will be next summer, not this summer, but next summer. So if we have a plan, it's just that we're not there yet.
So can we do a full remodel, move these kids around in the fall?
No. No. Again, again, I have, I say no, but I mean, based on what we've talked about, if we increase the capacity in the dorm by having the, the additional cheerleaders that we're talking about getting, soccer players that we're talking about getting, if the international players come back, international students come back, which, which we hope they do, then we will, will not have a place to put everybody.
Derek King. Yeah. Recommendation, and I'm, I'm assuming, I hope comfortably so, that that is because, and I believe supported by conversation that you just offered, and that from David, that that there, there is a plan, and while it's not the, the Cadillac of the campus, that you don't see issues or concerns about offering a reasonably suitable housing, you know, in, in proportion to the cost associated with it, so I, I'd kind of like to come back to what's on the agenda, is that what you want to do? Because it does appear to be your recommendation.
Well, the reality is, that's all we can do right now, I mean, tonight, is, is basically approve this. If someone wants to come back and discuss it again in June, we can come back and discuss it. And it will be discussed in the budget workshops, because it will be placed on the budget for next year to do, do the second phase. So there'll be some additional discussion on that. But right now, tonight, all we can do is approve what we really budgeted for this year, which was phase one. Steve, did you have a comment or question?
Well, I mean, I just recall last year, I believe it was last year, it might have been the year before, we did an extensive remediation, I thought of that mold, and my, and Trustee Henry mentioned that there was still mold in there, and I wondered, didn't we get a, some sort of clean bill? And I wondered, didn't we get a some sort of clean bill of health on that?
Got a clean bill of health on mold. We had them come through back last year. Again, COVID, it was pre-COVID, but we had them come back through all the dorms and check all the dorms and all the locations for mold and we were given a clean bill of health. Again, that could have been a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. I'm not, probably could tell you, David Graham could probably tell you exactly when it was.
Last summer.
Yeah, was it last summer?
Yeah.
So yeah, again, we're not proud of it either. We realize there's issues, but we have a plan to be able to overcome those issues. And, you know, maybe we could expedite it. We'll just have to wait and see.
And so on the plan that we're on, how long's it going to take to get it up to par?
This plan is to do the exterior of the facility. And then the interior of the facility is in phase two, which we're planning on putting in the budget for this next year. So it, right now, the plan is for it to start in next year's budget.
So next summer?
Could be.
We could get this.
It would absolutely be next summer at the latest. If there's some way that we could get it worked in during the year, if there's enough students that if if not enough students show up for the for the dorms and we could move them around, then there is that possibility of being able to do something in the fall. But I, right now, I'm anticipating four hundred to four hundred and twenty-five students in the dorm. And if that's the case, we got to have that.
We've got dorm space for how many?
Five hundred, five hundred students, five, two hundred and fifty rooms. And so that that dorm, I think, has fifty-two rooms, fifty-two, that's right, twenty-six downstairs and twenty-six upstairs. So right now, we need that dorm. If it comes up in the in the fall and we don't, for some reason, we don't have that many students and we can move students around, then we can start working on it in the fall.
How many kids do we have in the dorms right now?
Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty, that's COVID.
I understand.
Yeah, it's COVID. Normally, we'll have four hundred, four hundred and twenty-five in the dorm, normally. And so, you know, it depends. We have a, this year, we didn't have football season in the fall. You know, so we didn't have the students coming in in the fall that we normally have, we'll have this year. So I can tell you that if we get it approved in the budget, which I hope that we do, to do the second phase next year, that we'll start on it as soon as we possibly can. And if we can start on it in the fall, we'll start on it in the fall. If we can, depending upon the number of students that we have in dorms and if we can move students around to different locations.
So you're suggesting by next summer, this dorm could be done?
At the latest, that's correct. If it's, if the budget committee and the board approves, the budget cost, which increase in budget is going to be some for facilities for this next budget year.
David, and this will be my last question because I know you're getting tired of listening to what I have to say more than likely. David Graham, on your, on my question is, what was the estimate that you thought it would be? And I realize there's construction costs going on, going up. What do you think it would cost to do that?
That dorm is going to cost us anywhere in the neighborhood of half a million to a million dollars to really do everything.
Okay. Less this hundred and twenty-five thousand we're going to spend.
That's correct.
And again, when you start looking at the budget for next year, you'll see that in there.
Good.
For Northwest Dorm, in facilities. I think that pretty well answered that answer everybody's questions. We're good?
Yeah, well, I don't know that how good we are, but.
Well, yeah, we have, we'll bring it back up again in June. I mean, it's not in this year's budget. I mean, if there's money out there somewhere available, then the problem is you really can't do this in June because it's too late. But they're, you know, they're coming back after the second six weeks of summer, the football team's coming back and all the athletes are coming back. So that's July fifth. And so you couldn't approve it in the end of June and get anything done anyway. So, you know, it's kind of where we are.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, we do.
I'll move, we accept the Paragon Construction Associates Tyler bid.
With a performance bond.
With a performance bond.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, and with the permission from trustee Grant, I'd like to second that. But I would like to either stipulate or encourage that admin use discretion to determine the reasonableness of the cost of that bond. And I know David Graham, David Graham probably pinned that down pretty quick, you know, with a phone call or two or probably already knows. I'm just trying to leave the door open that we're looking at a hundred and twenty-five. And I just, I just don't want us to be granting, you know, an open, if that bond costs an exorbitant amount. It's probably something we need to, we need to talk about again. Want to give you flexibility, but just want to make sure, you know, we don't get tagged with with a an unusually high percentage cost associated with that bond.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
I'll amend my motion.
Okay, you see where I'm going with that?
Absolutely.
All right, motion by Steve, seconded by David. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
We'll move to item number eight, consider and discuss the request of a licensed professional counselor.
I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Parnell and let him give us an explanation on this request.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Oh, hands.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't hear you. Cut out for a second.
It said you're capable hands.
Oh, okay, so now David gets a very capable, but I only get a capable. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that one. So we may have to, may have to talk about that later. But members of the board, I really appreciate being able to come and talk to you about this. Dr. King knows this. Before I even accepted this position, one of the first questions I asked him was, how is it that we can get by without this position on campus? Because in the previous oh, eight to ten years or so of my working in student affairs across the country, we had seen about a four hundred percent increase in the number of student appointments with mental health providers. And so we had already begun looking at this position and working to find a way to fund this position. And again, you've already read all of this, but I will say that we have, we have come upon a wonderful way of funding this for the next two years in the fact that we have CARES out funding, which specifically allows for us to to fill this position using that funding and no funding basically of our own, of our own college. Now, of course, if we, if we do find what I believe we will find and that there is a continued need for this service, we'd have to find those dollars somewhere down the road. But I do believe that this is a very, very important position. And I think that we will see the need for it grow. Now, I'll also mention to you that what we do currently is we, basically, we farm out students who are having issues like these to an off-site location. And my issue with that, really, my problem with that is that we never, we will never know what the results of those interactions between our students and those mental health counselors are because they can't share them with us. So we don't know if someone is suicidal, homicidal, if there's anything, we will, we will never know. With our own counselor on campus, that counselor will be able to work with our behavioral intervention team and we would be able to help those students, I think, in a more comprehensive way than we can help them right now with with those off-site services. So the recommendation would be to approve the hiring of a licensed professional counselor for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, using those CARES funds.
Any questions for Dr. Parnell?
Dr. Parnell, I have one question.
Sure.
It's not really, but currently, when we send them to outsource them to counselors, is the college paying for that?
It's a mix. We do have funding that we help pay for that, but it also can turn into the student responsibility.
In this case, it would be all, it would be, the college would be paying for all of it?
That is correct.
What part of the budget is that in?
The college doesn't pay for it, Steve. The grant, her funds are going to pay for it.
No, I understand that, but currently, currently, when we, when we farm it out, I'm just saying, what, what, what part of the budget would that come out of?
You know, we do have some budget money for that, but most of it is, I believe, I could be wrong, it's free. It's free counseling that's available for students in the community. And I can't tell you all the ins and outs of it, but I believe that most of those students are able to go for free.
Many of them are. Some students will get the first counseling session for free. Some students, depending on income and other, other issues, they will wind up paying for those, those services at some point down the road. I will say, though, that it behooves us to be able to know what's going on with these students to the point that I think the safety of other students and those individuals who are seeking the help as well, I think that's paramount for us. And again, just the increase in the number of this kind of services has been, has been drastic over the last decade or so. The need is there.
To answer your question, Steve, it's probably not more than five or ten thousand dollars in the budget to do that. But I, we can go back and look and see, it's not a significant amount.
Yeah, I can check to see what that actual number is and get back with you.
I'm just, I'm just kind of curious.
Just for my clarification, would not the same HIPAA rules apply if we employ the person versus they go to an outside person?
Not if there, that person is dealing with our behavioral intervention team, which is also a need to know group on campus. So that, that counselor, that mental health, mental health provider can actually come into our behavioral intervention team and let that team know if there's something that that they find that is either harmful for that particular individual student or that can be harmful to other students on campus and making work of them through that. That does not, does not protect it from other members of the campus in that way.
Wouldn't that student have to give that, that intervention team permission through that counselor? I mean, that would fall under a HIPAA regulation.
No, sir. HIPAA also involves payment and we don't charge, we wouldn't be charging students for that. So we would not have to go through that sort of structure to get into that behavioral intervention team. The behavioral intervention teams that really sort of, probably about seven, eight, nine years ago, came up, became popular on many campuses after some of the shootings and some of the other issues that we have had on campus, the violent issue that we had on campus. And so when those came about, all of those issues with HIPAA were researched and our counselors have the right to come into that because our counselors are typically members of that community as well.
We'll do some more research on that, too. Does that answer everybody's questions? We would like to have a motion to approve the LPC counselor and that would be effective starting in the fall semester.
And, and Dr. Parnell, Dr. King, just for clarification, kind of following on Steve, what is the impact expected to be on the twenty-one, twenty-two?
I don't anticipate any impact.
Which would all be paid for by the CARES out funding.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, discussions? If not, I hear motion to approve.
Motion.
Who, who is this?
Mike Henry.
Mike, okay, Mike makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All a second's a motion. Discussion, if not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider and discuss room and board rates for twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two.
Board, as you know, Airmark has the opportunity to increase rate on an annual basis. I'm going to, again, turn this over to Dr. Parnell and to David Hopkins. And they're both very capable of being able to answer what he asked about this. They've been dealing with Airmark for the last, I guess, couple of months and they have some recommendations they'd like to provide.
Thank you, Dr. King, both for the change in title, being very capable now. I feel much better. Thank you. And I'm sure David Hopkins is disappointed, so.
Kill me.
So David and I will tag team if you have questions on this. Most of you know I'm an English teacher by trade, so numbers are not my forte. So if we get into the numbers much, then I'll probably ask David if he can help with those. We were, we were approached earlier this spring by Airmark and they were requesting an eight percent increase. Now, I wasn't aware at the time that they didn't ask for an increase last year during the COVID, during the height of the COVID pandemic. So they were sort of, they were looking to recoup some of the losses they had from COVID and as also to make sure they weren't losing ground from year to year. So what they asked for was originally the eight percent. David and I visited with them and we sort of talked them down to that six point two five percent that we are, that we are recommending today. Now, just before we get into too much of this, we're also not recommending any increases in the housing costs. So we're not recommending anything there. Now, this, this is where the numbers start to play in and maybe, David, if you hear me struggling at all, I'll just let you just tell me to stop talking. But we, we get an upcharge from every student who purchases a meal plan through Airmark. And at one point, I think it was roughly a twenty-five percent upcharge. I think it's twenty-four point something, but it rounds off to be twenty-five. For this particular year, what we are suggesting is that we allow Airmark to have their six point two five percent increase, but that we don't pass that increase along to students in one lump sum like this. COVID has impacted our students negatively, impacted the students' families very negatively. And if we take that upcharge into consideration, then we are still going to be making a substantial amount of money through students purchasing these meal plans. We won't be making as much, but we will still be gaining a profit. I think we dropped, and David, correct me if I'm wrong again, from around twenty-five to about twenty-one percent of a profit margin in that, is that correct, David?
That's right.
Okay, and so what we're recommending is, again, no increase in our housing fees and no increases passed along to students for the, for Airmark's fees, but to grant Airmark their six point two five percent increase, again, since they didn't have an increase last year. Questions?
Dr. Parnell, David, David Monk, I just, or to, I guess, to you and the capable David Hopkins. Be, be popular. I think it applies, however. Don't take this the wrong way, but, you know, you're, you're advocating for, we accept an eight percent increase and put the cause of vendor ask for it. But we just take the hit. We don't pass it on.
Well, it would be a six point two five percent increase. And I'm asking that for this year, we don't pass it along to students. And that doesn't mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, did they not ask for eight percent? I thought eight.
They, they did ask for eight percent and we, we negotiated them down to that six point two five.
Okay, so how, how, how does it really fit with, with a good business plan that, that you accept vendors increasing your cost of doing business, but you just say, no, we're going to, we're going to keep our price the same? When the model is exactly what we have followed for a rather long time, I guess. I am not strongly opposed. I'm just saying that's an area to be cautious. Because pretty soon, you'll be the only guy that goes home with your sack empty. And we need to be careful about going in that direction. Again, take it the way I mean it. To offend, I'm just being, being direct.
Well, and to make sure that I explain that correctly, we're not going home with an empty sack. We're simply going home with less of a profit than we've had in the past. And this doesn't mean that we can't pass these specific points on to students later on. But I'm saying, I'm suggesting, and I think the administration is suggesting, that right now, we don't pass it along. So let's, let's assume, for instance, that next year, they come back and they say, we want another three percent. Doesn't mean that we can't tack on an extra percentage point to that to students next year when things are better financially out there for most of our families. Hopefully, they will be. And so slowly, we can get back up to that twenty-five percent upcharge that we were getting before. I'm simply suggesting we delay that, put it off right now because of the COVID issue.
Yeah, well, I don't object to something that, you know, that helps the students and certainly the college, you know, appears to have, you know, the tap turned on from, from the federal government. So we can afford to do it. I really, my point, you know, my, my point is, we, we still, it is a business, even though it's a business of providing a good educational experience. Now, is this a one-year only?
This will be a one-year only. And again, the following years, we can tack on those extra percentage points that we lost this year.
David, make sure, I mean, the price won't go back down.
David, make sure, I mean, the price won't go back down, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, no, sure. No, but we will, we won't pass along, we, we will continue to pass along any increases to students in the future. If they're asking for, for a year for COVID.
So, you know, Airmark is not different than any other business out there. Uh, may, maybe apart from those in government, or supported by government, uh, in that, they have to make adjustments, too. So, if you, if you simply said, no, we won't accept that increase, where does it go? What do you think?
Well, as I understand it, and, and Dr. King, correct me if I'm wrong, but our contract is written in a way that they, they will have an increase every year. Um, they just decided that last year wouldn't be an appropriate time to ask for one, so they're basically doubling up this year.
Oh, is that to say they have a contract that we approved on time that allows them to increase every year? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is my understanding. Now.
And could we look into that?
Sure.
See about that, and then, I ask.
LaWanna, are you on the telephone? Are you on the phone message here? I think, I think that's the case. It's been two or three years, but I think there is an automatic increase, and I can't tell you the exact amount. LaWanna, do you know? Maybe she's not here, but we'll, we'll double check on that. Uh, but again, that was approved by the board four or five years ago.
Yeah.
The contract was.
Jerry, how long is our contract with Airmark?
I'd have to go back and look and see again, uh, what, what that is, and I can verify that for you, you know, later on. Uh, but.
I believe we have two more years under this contract.
Andrew did that, and I believe it was two years ago for a four-year contract.
I believe we have two more years in this contract.
Well, could we refresh and maybe, you know, kind of be better informed about, uh, if it grants an automatic increase? Based on what and how much? Uh, you know, that, that sort of thing? Now, I realize that when that contract was, was approved, that Airmark provided some, uh, what, you know, at the time, were attractive concessions, how that, you know, would be monetized, you know, over the, over the period of time, uh, you know, for analysis. But they did bring some things to the table. I think they did a bunch of remodeling and that in the, in the cafeteria, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. King, but, you know, it, it looked like a good deal of time, may still be. Uh, I, I'm just simply saying, I, I don't know the answer to a question, it doesn't seem that we have it, of, well, increase based on what?
And, and I will say that Airmark continues to bring things to the table. Um, they, they now offer a great deal more service than they were offering before. They offer seven different, different things that people can have during lunch and dinner. So, they've off, they've expanded their service, and they continue to do that. And in order to do that, to meet the needs of the student, they have hired more, more staff. So, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with their request for more funding. I think, I think that's probably, probably needed. Um, I think the question for me is, uh, and, and the, I guess, the caveat for me was, I wanted to make sure that for one year, we could not pass that, that increase on the student.
I, I don't have a big issue, but I just think we should refresh our memories, uh, with a clear understanding, when does a contract expire? And, and what, what provision in that contract allows an automatic increase? And what is that increase based on, or is it simply a unilateral, uh, situation, where it's whatever they decide they need it to be? If we, if we could, could learn that, you know, that's kind of another, another topic. Uh, but I, I think you've answered the question as, as we best can with the information known to us.
And I'll get back with you on that information as well.
That's great, great, thank you.
You bet.
I, I think one other thing on that, um, is just that I think we should look at what our other options were at the time of what we were spending. And is, or do they still offer us a percentage of all the catering they do outside of our facility?
Yes, they do.
And what is that?
Uh, it's either ten percent or seventeen percent, depending on what kind of the catering that they do. If it's off-campus catering, I believe it's seventeen percent. On campus, if they're in the, let's say they're doing, uh, concession stand and, and the gym, I believe it's ten percent.
I, I would be interested if you're going to do some work to find out how much revenue that's actually meaning to the college.
I will, I will tell you that, and when I last spoke to our director of dining services, it's a very small amount compared to the, all these other numbers. Uh, it's, it's not a significant number, but I can find that out.
Thanks.
You bet.
Anyone else have any? Comments or additions to the discussion? If not, do I hear a motion that we consider that we approve the, uh, uh, board rights for twenty-one and year twenty? Anyone want to make a motion approving that?
Mr. Chairman, since I have so many questions about that, I'll offer a motion to accept, as I recommended, but I still would like to have that, that fill-in detail on kind of, you know, where we are and where we're going to be in two years.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, Steve seconds that motion. Any further?
That was Jerry, that was Jerry, wasn't it?
Jerry? Yes.
Okay, Jerry.
Yes.
All right, uh, any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Right.
All. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number ten, consider and discuss personnel updates.
Uh, board, I think Norma's going to put up those on the screen, but these are your typical resignations term that we have each year, uh, retirements that we have each year, um, uh, new hires, and the new hires are all replacing, uh, previous, uh, employees that have left. And, uh, that's pretty well, I think, yet. Anybody have any questions about the personnel update?
Are there, Dr. King, are there anyone that's, that's moving on, uh, that we're, we're deciding not to replace?
No, uh, not, not here, not at this time. Usually, we do that at the June board meeting, uh, when we, when we, um, determine what we're going to do for, uh, our faculty and staff for the next year. Usually, a June board meeting. That we, if we do it at all. So, no, to answer your question, just no, Steve, we don't, we're not, not replace, we're not replacing anybody that's, or terminating anybody.
All right, do I hear a motion? We approve the, uh, personnel updates?
So moved.
Ron Day, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we need to go into a closed session for a few minutes. And so, I'll ask for a motion to approve going into, uh, closed session under the government code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Dr. Charlie makes a motion going to closed session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who seconded that?
That's David.
Mike and Ma.
Okay, David, David Mock seconded. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We're back in open session?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in open session. We need to consider the appointment of a board, uh, district number nine trustee. The nominee for the trustee of district nine is Dr. Terry Easton. Do I hear a motion to approve Dr. Terry Easton?
I'll make a motion. We approve Dr. Terry Easton for the district nine board member vacancy.
I'll second.
Okay, Paula makes a motion, and Steve, uh, seconded some motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Say no?
Well, I, I don't want to say no, but please just allow me to abstain from this. I don't want to go as strong as saying no, but I'll just abstain a vote.
Okay, so Mike abstains from voting. All right, all.
Ray? Uh, I didn't get in on it all the way. Uh, what, what motion got made, and what, what was said, please?
Um, I just said that, uh, uh, we need to consider the appointment of a board district nine trustee, and then the nominee for the trustee of district nine is Dr. Terry Es- Es- uh, Easton. And Paula, Paula made, uh, she made the motion to approve it, and Steve seconded the motion to approve it.
I believe.
Okay.
Now, Ron, that's back in open session, so I've got that part, okay?
Right, right, but I didn't, what it amounted to was, I didn't get anything other than, um, the, the tail end of the vote.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, we were, we were trying to get back in.
Okay.
Okay, Ron, uh, you, uh, you did get that Mike abstained from voting on that.
Right. Now, that was in the general.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, uh, if no other further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no? Okay, the motion carries. All right, we'll move to item number.
Yeah, I'm adjourned.
Number thirteen.
Is that my turn?
That's your turn, Dr. Charlie.
I'll make a motion, we adjourned.
All right, Dr. Charlie makes motion, we adjourned. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Good night, and you all have a good evening.
You, too.
Good night, everybody.
Okay.